Well, good morning. It is August the 22nd. Our work session meeting. It's nine o'clock in the morning. Please stand for the pledge allegiance and then the kids at Hope pledge.
Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As an adult and treasure hunter, I am permitted to search for all the talent, skills, and intelligence that exists in all children here. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
At this moment, we have a few items before we get into our presentations. Business items we need to take care of. Mr. Superintendent, can I have your recommendation?
Yes, I recommend the board approve the agenda items as submitted.
Board members, you heard the recommendations of the superintendent. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Can I get a second? I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Superintendent, you want to take over the rest of the presentations for me, please, sir?
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to say good morning and thank you to our board members. I saw many of you at our tunnels of hope throughout the week. We did have one at Manatee this morning. I couldn't make because of this board workshop, but I just wanted to let you know you were able to make it, Dr. Mills. Thank you. But all I can say is, this is my eighth year, going into nine actually, and the opening of school was fantastic. We had a very smooth opening of school. We had very few glitches. Normally, some of the issues are with transportation. I could say that Mr. O'Leary and Jacunte Prince, our director of transportation, did just an outstanding job. I will say on the first day of school, there was one disappointment, and that was my daughter did not make it to her bus stop on time, and she missed the bus on the first day. But that was the biggest headache that I had. But on a serious note, we just had a wonderful opening of school. I want to thank our principals and our administrators, our teachers, our food service folks, our bus drivers, everybody in the system. It was a great opening. Also, I want to acknowledge our maintenance staff. Once again, we had a very rigorous summer program with almost 5,000 students participating. It's very difficult to get our campuses ready to go and clean. They worked around the clock to make sure that our campuses look great. Many of our schools had mulch, new plants out front. They just looked really good, and I just want to thank Derek McSween, who's here. Derek, if you'd stand. Derek, you look great in a suit, I just want to add too. Thank you for dressing up today, but Derek and his team did a fantastic job. Before we jump into our presentations, I also wanted to mention our enrollment. Our enrollment projections are pretty close to what we thought. We anticipated an additional about 1,100 students in our public schools. We're getting closer to that, and we'll see our enrollment grow as we get closer to October. That's just, we don't ever go lose students. We always tend to gain, gain, gain. But I know that board members, you may get emails about, you've got this kindergarten class that's just packed, and I've got 25 kids in this first grade class. In the next couple of days, we'll be meeting as teams, and we will be balancing those classes. We always wait for the first 10 days to see exactly where we have additional kids show up that we didn't expect, where we have fewer kids, and then we start moving folks around. But you will see those emails, and you will have those concerns from teachers, and I want you to know that we'll be addressing that after the 10th day. But please, if you do get those emails, as always, you forward them to me, and then we make sure we'll address those in the coming days. Couple of things that you have in front of you. The FHSAA stopped doing passes for athletic events. In the past, you'd be distributed passes from the Florida High School Athletic Association. So they don't do that anymore. But we do have passes for you. These are our All Activities VIP passes to all of our school activities, school plays, school performances. The only one I would caution you on is Patrick Madden's Port St. Lucie High School plays. Those tend to sell out, so you'll have to make those arrangements. You can always go through me or through Patrick to get tickets to those, that particular, you know, those plays that cycle through. I just want to publicly say with Mr. Madden that I would caution you, this may not get you into one of those, but every place else, you have one and one for a guest. Also today is we've implemented our new panic buttons. Many of you do visit our schools and campuses and are there. I want to make sure that you have this as well. Mr. O'Leary has these for you. If you don't already have them, that you should have them today. But Mr. O'Leary, he can explain how this works. If you had a situation that we hope never happens on one of our campuses, you start pressing this button, and immediately people will come on scene. So I just want to make sure that our board members, as part of our employees, that you're protected, that we take you into account, and that also works on the dais as well, should anything happen in a board meeting. Before we jump into our presentations today, we have three. Lydia, can you move forward? One is our attendance initiative. That goes along with one of our, or one of my goals, which is improving attendance. You've seen me message this on our local news. In fact, every single media hit I had, I really focused on attendance and trying to make sure our students are in school every day. You've heard me say this before. COVID kind of normalized that it's, that with our parents, that maybe it's okay for their kids to miss school. It's not okay. We're going to be very aggressive this year with regards to attendance, and if students, they start having patterns of missing school, we're going to try to make sure we send somebody out to the house. We're sending letters home. We're calling them. We've got to get our kids in each and every day, because regardless of what kind of goals I have in improving our reading and math, that can't happen if kids aren't in school. And those kids that miss school tend to be our most fragile. So I want to make sure that we emphasize that each and every day. So Lydia is gonna, and Lydia Martin, our chief communications person, is going to be presenting along with Heather Rowland, our executive director of student services. We're going to take a short, if that's okay, to the board chair, just a quick break. Our longest presentation today will be our legislative update. We had a very active legislative season where our legislators enacted laws that many of them have a profound impact on public education. I wanted to make sure the board is informed, because you may hear from parents, or you may hear from teachers, about some legislation and some questions regarding legislation. I wanted you to be able to have questions. Then I'd ask the board chair for one quick break again, and then we'll come back, answer any questions, and then we'll go into what I'm most excited about is our Palm Point acquisition, which is really the school district taking over Palm Point from FAU. In all intents and purposes, Palm Point is already one of our schools. That's what many people don't really understand. It's, we hire the principal, we hire the staff, they follow our curriculum. They, they're really one of our schools, but yet they're not. They have their own school district. That will discontinue after this year. And I wanted you to be informed, because you're also going to be voting to approve this on September 12th. The Palm Point, or the FAU Board of Trustees already approved this at their Board of Trustees meeting. The TECUS Board has already approved this transition, and this is a real win for the citizens of St. Lucie County, and it's a real win for our taxpayers, because this, this transition is going to prevent us from having to build another K-8 prior to 2030, which would cost us right now about $65 million, and with inflation, even more. So this is a huge win for us, and I'm very, very happy. I know I had staff work very hard on it, but when we transition, I'll talk a little more to that. So with that being said, I'm going to invite, oh, I wanted to mention one other thing, because this is important. Chris Harrison is retiring. She's retiring in January of 2024. So in about five months, Chris is going to be leaving us. Chris, how many years? 38 years. 38 years. She's not taking Ava with her. Just wanted to say that. So we're still going to have Ava, but we will, first of all, I want to thank Chris, and we'll have plenty of time to thank Chris for her years of service. But I did tell Ms. Harrison that I was going to be mentioning this to the board today, because we will be advertising for a board secretary and putting a committee together, and I'll be asking the board chair to sit in on that committee. And we want to make sure that we have a few months of transition time, because this is a big job. She has 38 years of history, and you only have so many board meetings. So I want to make sure that we transition somebody, so that that's a seamless transition for our board members, and also because it is such an important position. So Chris, I'll say this again many times, but you have no idea how much I appreciate you and your wisdom, knowledge, and experience, so it can't be replaced. You'll just be a phone call away, though. That's the good news. So with that being said, I'm going to go ahead and invite Heather Rowland and Lydia Martin up for our attendance initiative.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Chairman Ingersoll, members of the board, and Superintendent Dr. Prince. Thank you so much for this opportunity this morning to share with you our attendance efforts. As Dr. Prince stated, and as you're very well aware, Dr. Prince's primary goal, goal number one, is to improve average daily attendance. We've all seen the news across the nation in terms of the number of students that are missing and not attending school, and we want to ensure as a district that we are making every effort to have students in school and to be engaged in the learning process. This has been a collaborative effort between many departments and school staff in creating a systematic plan moving forward to support our students, our schools, and our community. So showing up together. Fun fact, and I'm just going to share a personal story with you this morning. I was on the side of 95 with a blowout this morning, and I was scared I wasn't going to be showing up this, together. So happy to be here. But all jokes aside, our theme this year, our attendance campaign, is showing up together. And the efforts around this are going to be shared by Lydia and Dejean Jackson as far as our campaign is concerned, but wanted to also share with you some things that the Division of ESE and Student Services are doing to support those efforts. So again, going back to the goal to improve the average daily attendance rate. We all are very well aware that student attendance is everyone's responsibility. It is not one single person's responsibility or one single part of our community. It really is about partnering with our parents, our schools, our community members to ensure that all students are in school, that they're cared for, and that any barriers to school attendance are addressed. Some things that you're going to notice as we move through this presentation are efforts that we're making to engage our parents and our community as part of the campaign. One of the messages that we are, our schools are messaging on a regular basis is making sure that parents are aware that we want to limit those appointments to after-school hours, anything that may be able to be addressed after school, that we encourage that they do that and limit any checking out of students, understanding that there are things that may come up that require them to remove their students from school, but we want to ensure that they're there, they're present, and accounted for, and that their children get to school on time every day, and that is a priority. Many families work, and they may have, due to the economy, many families have two and three jobs, and understanding that those are barriers to attendance and that the school staff are there to support in those efforts to break down those barriers. We're also encouraging parents to communicate with the schools and agencies if there are barriers to school attendance, so that we can assist them in making sure that we break those down. And then monitoring their child's attendance as students are in middle and high school, making sure that parents are having regular, ongoing communication and monitoring their students' attendance in all of their classes, periods one through seven. And then our efforts as a school district are creating the conditions in which that students can be engaged in the learning process. The single most powerful thing is having a care, an adult that cares for a child. So having that relationship is super important, and providing those school-based supports if students are experiencing challenges. We're going to talk a little bit about some of the challenges that students may experience in terms of their mental health, their physical health, and the reasons why they may not be in attendance. And then connecting families and students with those community resources. In addition, and I know that Dejean and Lydia are going to speak, Lydia specifically will be speaking about this in a few minutes, but making attendance a community priority. So getting the word out to our community partners about the importance of attendance and getting to our churches and all of the organizations to spread the word about the importance of having students in school. So why are so many students missing school? There are a variety of factors. I did a bit of research to kind of take a look at what are some of those areas that are, you know, at the very top of the list, and Harvard and Yale have done a few studies around student attendance, and one of the most important factors, again, goes back to that relationship. And attendance is a behavior that is learned over time, so parents are critical in kind of fostering that from a very young age. But I've listed here, this is not an exhaustive list, but a list of reasons why students may be missing school. You know, physical health is a, is a big deal, right? So students that are struggling with physical health, that may have health conditions, we want to ensure that they're supported, that if they require any sort of health plans, that the school staff support in that and creating those conditions for them to be in school as regular as possible. And then mental health. We are very fortunate in our school district to continue to expand our mental health services for our students. We currently have nine mental health counselors that are district-based that provide school-based mental health services for students that may be struggling in the area of mental health. In addition, we have a mental health collaborative. We have nine of our community agencies that we partner with around our community to provide school-based mental health services. So going back to it being a community and school effort, we can't do this alone. And then family responsibilities. As I mentioned earlier, many of our families are impacted financially and may have to have, you know, two to three jobs. With that being said, older siblings oftentimes are having to care for their younger siblings, and that impacts their attendance and being at school in a timely manner. Our role in that is to ensure that we are connecting families with those resources in our schools, in our community, so that our students are able to be to school on time and there all day. Transportation can sometimes be a barrier for students that live, you know, two miles, less than two miles from school, but transportation, it seems to be more of an issue, again, going back to those siblings that may need to care for the younger siblings and getting that transportation to school. Lack of a relationship with a trusted adult, those patterns of non-attendance. So I think we all know that during COVID, there was a time where the pattern of non-attendance was kind of built upon, and we want to speak the message to students, how important it is that they're there, that we want them to be in school, and that they are cared for. Homelessness, homelessness is on the rise. So making sure that we're connecting our homeless families with our homeless liaison, the school staff and social workers, to ensure that they have things in place, including our transportation, to get to school. And I, I'm not going to go through the entire list, but again, going back to, you know, the impact that social media and anxiety may have on our children. When we were younger, we were able to go into our home and shut things off if we had a bad day. But unfortunately, children do not have that luxury if they are connected to social media, you know, when they arrive home. So that certainly impacts their ability, their social, emotional, and mental health to kind of process information. So it's critically important that we continue to engage our families and best practices and strategies on how to support their student if they're struggling. And then, of course, suspensions, and that is something that we take very seriously and as a last resort. We want students in school. We want to ensure that if there are concerns around their behavior, that we're putting interventions in place to support them so that they remain in school and they are not suspended out of school. Here, this is a graphic that I wanted to share with you, and this just outlines our average daily attendance. The average daily attendance for our school district is indicated in blue, and this is from 2017 to 2021, '22 school year. This information was pulled from the Florida Department of Education website and just shows a comparison with the state average daily attendance. So again, going back to Dr. Prince's number one goal of increasing that average daily attendance, you will notice that over the past five years, that there is a decline, a slight decline in our average daily attendance. We certainly, our goal is to increase that. You will also notice that our state average is higher than our district average over time. So our goal is, is that we far exceed the state average this school year. This information is pulled from our Survey 5 data, so that's why it's lagging. Our Survey 5 data will be certified in October, and we'll have that information to share with you related to the '22, '23 data. So I just wanted to provide some information regarding truancy and chronic absenteeism and what the similarities and differences are, and then speak to you about how we're supporting in our schools and our community around these two pieces. So truancy really is, it's only counting unexcused absences. What we know about student attendance is that, yes, unexcused absences, it's critical that we're monitoring that, and we're communicating with families if we notice a pattern where students are missing school and they're not excused from school. So we're working very hard to communicate with families on that, to ensure that we, to ensure that they are providing excuses when needed, and if they're not, to share with them what our policies are as a district regarding unexcused absences. This, the truancy emphasis emphasizes more of compliance and relies more heavily on laws and administrative laws, so we'll talk about truancy initiatives and truancy court. Chronic absenteeism is combined, right? So going back to the previous slides where we talked a little bit about the importance of making sure that your students are on time and that they're, they're, they're at school all day. So chronic absenteeism looks at excused absences, so for a variety of, you know, of things. For instance, if a student has a doctor's appointment or is out sick, unexcused absences. So that may be where the student is, you know, they're not provided with an excuse. They, the parent perhaps did not provide that, or it doesn't fall under our excused absence policy. And then out-of-school suspensions also count in chronic absenteeism. The emphasis here is really looking at what interventions that we can provide using those school and community resources and leveraging those to ensure that students are in school every day. Are there any questions before I go on? Nope, okay. So showing up together, and as I shared with you, this is a joint effort throughout the district. Lydia is going to talk about the launching of the attendance campaign and all that that includes. In addition, I'm just going to share with you briefly, each St. Lucie Public School, in preparation for the launching of our campaign, created an attendance plan to address what they noticed as trends in their attendance on their school campuses. So we'll share examples with you of those efforts. And then there is an increased level of district support and monitoring this school year, and I'll share that with you. We are very fortunate to have access to Power BI attendance platform, and there are some tweaks that Mr. O'Leary and Dr. Summer have made as a result of our increased monitoring efforts, so we'll share that with you. And then focused efforts on engaging our students and families and community stakeholders. We have been doing some professional learning as well with our attendance teams at each school. So each school has an attendance team either led by an assistant principal or school counselor, and we'll talk a little bit about that. There are some additional staff that have also been added to our communications and student services staff, and then again, that ongoing professional learning. So Dr. Prince had a vision, right? Knowing that attendance, our chronic absenteeism continues to be a concern. So last year, as a launch to what we knew was going to be a goal for the superintendent, we had the opportunity to bring our attendance teams together beginning in February to have some professional learning and some guided creation of attendance plans. So we had three sessions with our attendance teams to really kind of take a look at their data around their attendance at each of their schools. Teams were charged with identifying those areas of strength and how they can capitalize on that, and then also areas of, or opportunities for growth, and those places where we may need to provide some intervention and supports on school campuses. It's important to note that each school's attendance plan is different based on the needs of their students. So that all of our attendance teams participated in those sessions, and as a result, they created an attendance plan. This is an exemplar. Alapata Flats created their attendance plan, and just wanted to share a snapshot with you. We, we have every, each school's attendance plan that we will be happy to share with you if requested. But really identifying what their goals are in supporting improved attendance on their campus, and whose responsibility at each campus or at each school in their role, how they will support the attendance of students moving forward. And it's a very comprehensive plan. Attendance teams are charged to meet on a monthly basis. However, many teams are meeting much more frequently to review their data and to put supports in place for students that there's noticing patterns. We've also created, or we've had district attendance teams, however, we're, we're kind of resetting and restarting those district attendance teams, and our first meeting is going to be held next week. Again, going back to, this is a collaborative effort among many departments in our district. So these are the district attendance team meeting dates. In addition, for a level of support for our school-based teams, we've created monthly meetings and monthly sessions for our team leads, not to take them off campus, because we know it's important that they're on campus, but these will be held virtually, and we will be leading that effort in collaboration with the communications department. As I shared with you earlier, Power BI is such an amazing tool that school administrators have at their fingertips, and consistently, Mr. O'Leary and his team are making tweaks as, you know, requested based on the needs of school principals and leadership teams to make sure that we've got a quality product, that we can access the information in real time. So what I'm sharing here with you, this just shows you the average daily attendance, and this is for district. Of course, you'll note that the date is 8:15, so this is obviously lagging. But each day, each principal or an administrative team is able to view their average daily attendance and then dig deeper by student, you know, drilling down individually. This is another representation here that may be helpful to principals, and this breaks down their average daily attendance by day, so they're able to do some comparisons there. And then this is a graphic representation. there. And then this is a graphic representation, as you see, which is, is quite easy to, to reference, and that's also by day.
And just, um, just to fill the board in, we've, it's been years since we've shared with you our capabilities from a dataset standpoint, but what Heather's showing you is a screenshot of basically what our principals see. Where I see it and look at from a lens of a district, they're able to see their individual school, they can see other schools. It's, it's a, it's a very powerful data tool that allows us to monitor data in real time and also to make adjustments day by day based on what we see. Each Monday, Dr. Summer sends out specific data points that we're going to work on, and that really drives the conversations with our principal supervisors. So when Ms. Mona Rae Buchanan, or Ms. Latrice Woolard, or Mr. Daryl Cunymas goes out to a school, they're going to look and discuss specific data points that you might see here, that how are we addressing this and how are principals addressing this in their schools with regards to attendance? It could be discipline, it could be a multitude of data points. But there's a lot of intentionality here. We're very structured with how we do things, but these are just some screenshots of, of kind of what our capabilities are. Thanks, Heather. Sorry.
No problem. And speaking of that intentionality, new this year, our executive directors are able to monitor attendance for their specific schools. So in the past, you know, when we're sorting, we may look at a list of all schools. They're able then to drill down based on the schools that they are supporting to look at their specific schools' data. So that is an addition this year. So just wanted to share with you some of our district and school supports. As mentioned previously, students obviously are missing school for a multitude of reasons. Our boots on the ground, of course, are our school-based staff, our administrators, our teachers, our healthcare professionals, our bus drivers serve a critical role. Our, our people in the cafeteria in making that connection with students. This, this is a, a list of, of additional staff that can also be of support. The school counselors, of course, serve as that first line of defense if students are struggling either in the area of academics or social, emotional, behavioral, mental health. So they're the first point of contact often for students. School social workers, we are very fortunate to have, through referendum dollars, additional mental health and school social work staff within our division to support our schools. Currently, we have 21 school social workers that serve all of our campuses and provide not only that support with attendance and truancy, but also mental health supports and providing individual and small group counseling. Attendance mentors identified at some school sites. We also are fortunate that we've added a parent liaison to our division this year, and that parent liaison is instrumental, again, in doing outreach to our families in collaboration with our other support staff and school staff to increase their understanding of what's required of school attendance and talk to them about, you know, what barriers they're experiencing and how we can help them. And then, of course, we have, as mentioned earlier, our school psychologist, as well as our mental health collaborative, which we depend on very heavily as a community partner. And these are some additional community partnerships, and I can't say enough about our partnership with Boys and Girls Club and the A-plus attendance program. Currently, Boys and Girls Club provides five attendance advocates that serve 15 of our elementary and K-8 schools. Their efforts are focused on unexcused absences, so as mentioned previously, kind of catching them early. They are in charge of making home visits, collaborating with the attendance teams at the school level to ensure that we're capturing all of the students, and if there are concerns that families are experiencing, that they're communicating that with our school teams so that we can better engage our families and support them. This Port St. Lucie Police Department partnership is, has been an ongoing partnership with the school district for several years. We are very fortunate to have two officers that support our truancy efforts in the Port St. Lucie area. And the officers' charge really is, you know, in those instances where, as a, you know, as a school district entity, we've been unable to locate students, and we've exhausted many efforts before we tap on their shoulder. However, they have been very helpful in partnering with us to, you know, make home visits, to communicate with families in, in the Port St. Lucie area. And I know that Lydia is going to speak a little bit more about Mrs. Jackson's role as that family and community liaison in our Fort Pierce area as well. And then we also have SENS-FENS. I'm not certain if this is a resource that you're familiar with, but oftentimes, we have families and children that are in need, are in need of services beyond what has been effective within our school district. So we oftentimes refer some of those students that may be struggling, families that may be struggling and need some additional support. Some of the services that SENS-FENS provide is attendance and truancy, behavioral support, so, and case management. So when families are in need of some wraparound services, they're very helpful in helping facilitate that. And then, you know, obviously, as a last resort, truancy court, and, and truancy court is a, a resource that we utilize as a district. Currently, we're averaging approximately 114 referrals for truancy court each year, and that is through Julie Oldenhoff, who is the current magistrate. And truancy court is facilitated with the school staff along with our school social workers, and the goal really is that we, the outcome of this is that student attendance improves and that we're, you know, encouraging families and students to attend school regularly. Well, that helps. I don't have my glasses on. So I'm going to turn it over now to Lydia Martin. Thank you.
Good morning. Chairman Ingersoll, board members, Superintendent Dr. Prince, thank you for the opportunity for me to share how we're getting our attendance campaign messaging out. This is just a brief overview of how we are utilizing our different avenues, and I'm going to start with our collateral, and you can see some of that around the boardroom. We have three-by-five outdoor banners on all of our school sites, along with our front office pop-up banners where you can see the average daily attendance. And we also developed the pop-up banner that's to the left of the screen there. This will be going out into community agencies, partners, and this is part of the work that Ms. Jackson is doing, partnering with them and approaching them, asking if we can put up signs and posters in their businesses and reception areas.
And Ms. Martin, can you go back real quick?
Sure.
I just wanted to, to let the board know that whenever they go into a front office, they'll see the average daily attendance, and it'll be a banner.
Yes, and here's some examples.
To the left-hand side of the screen, actually, you can see one of our pop-up banners, but those are going to be going in the front office of all of our, of all of our schools.
And you can see, here's Oakhamic and St. Lucie Elementary posting their average daily attendance. We also developed a month-by-month campaign for principals where each month we have marquee messaging, messages that they can send to parents in their newsletters, school messengers that they can send out, along with easy access to all of the graphics and collateral, video links, and these, this is just really to help support their work. We know they have so much on their plate, so this is one of the things that we wanted to be able to support them in their messaging. We also have a web slider on our district website. It is our Showing Up Together, and then if you click that, it will take you to the Attendance Matters webpage. It's also connected with a QR code on that banner, so people in the public can scan that. It will take you right to our website. We continue to build it. We will continue to add resources and videos as we build out our campaign. We do provide school support in our attendance messaging. That's one of the things that Ms. Jackson is available for. She is working on, in collaboration with Student Services, a school-based attendance presentation, and this, she will be available for PTO meetings, SAC meetings, Title I parent nights, et cetera. We have a very heavy presence on social media, so you will see our attendance campaign on Facebook, Instagram, Twitter, along with our videos and important points for parents to understand. Just want to play a short video that we created, and this was really for the launch of our campaign. We'll continue to build out our videos throughout the year.
In St. Lucie Public Schools, we are showing up together. Did you know that students should miss no more than nine days of school each year to stay engaged, successful, and on track for graduation? In fact, over the course of a school year, when students miss just two days of school a month, this can affect a student's academic performance. For more information, visit www.stlucieschools.org or our social media outlets. St. Lucie Public Schools, Showing Up Together.
All right. Dr. Prince also was involved in quite a few back-to-school interviews, and he was very consistent with his messaging about attendance, both on the radio, print, and television interviews. So this is just an excerpt from one of those interviews.
Attendance in school is absolutely critical to every child's success.
The biggest challenge is getting students to come to school after the pandemic.
Attendance has become a huge issue, and it's not with the older kids, it's also with the younger children.
Over the last year, he says, in three high schools, 55% of students miss 20 or more days. Out of two middle schools, 45% of students.
We're not in that world anymore. Students have to be here every day.
One of the things that Heather mentioned is Ms. Jackson really getting on into the community. She's had numerous opportunities to present in churches, and this is a video clip of part of the recorded message that she shared, and this was from the New Testament Baptist Service.
Finally, families and community, it is important to show up together in school. Did you know that if you just miss two days of school a month, those absences add up, and chronic absenteeism affects not only your ability to pass tests, but also to even graduate? You need to show up. Think about this. In Psalm 25:4, the Bible says, "Show me your way, Lord; teach me your paths." You have to first show up to learn. Students, whether adults or kids, learn when in the presence of a master teacher.
So that's just one example. This is another, another example, some photos from the Fresh Wind Fresh Fire Back-to-School Youth Celebration that Dr. Prince attended along with Dejawn Jackson, and some of our principals were, were there as well, and this was just another opportunity to get our attendance message out into the community. That concludes our presentation. Do you have any questions?
Any questions, board members?
May I say a couple of words while we're thinking about questions?
Sure.
All right. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank Dejawn. I was all over the place the first few weeks of school, but Dejawn, I think you had me beat. I walked into Fresh Wind Fresh Fire Church yesterday morning for a back-to-school event. Pastor Dan Pierre, I couldn't thank enough, really had, highlighted our students and had some care packages for the children. The principal of Fort Pierce Westwood Academy was there, along with Mr. Eldrick Gardner from Fort Pierce Central, they were there, and we, I saw a lot of community members, city council members, retirees, but it was just a great event. But Dejawn has really been making the rounds and really spreading, of course, I always say, spread the gospel of St. Lucie County Public Schools, but she was literally spreading the gospel in one of our churches. Also was really impressed. She got up and spoke to the congregation. The, the message has been consistently clear when she goes from place to place, and it's not just the schools, but it's the community events, how important attendance is because we need the partnership with the parents. The only way we're going to change behavior is to get our parents and our families to change their behavior so they know how important this is. Now, we can do our part by making school a good place to be, and we want to make sure that every child has a meaningful relationship with, with an adult at the school. But it really comes down to our parents understanding that their child has to be in school each and every day. There's been a lot of intentionality here. I talk about intentionality all the time, but it's not just our, our students that we're trying to make sure that are in our schools every day, but it's also our teachers. We've really emphasized our teacher attendance, where they need to be in school because a lost day for teachers is a lost day in many cases for instructions. We have a lot of fantastic substitutes out there, want to thank them, but, but they, they don't, they don't deliver the material quite as well as the teachers do, and that's something or an area that we're really focused on as well. So I want to thank our staff. Also wanted to mention, too, we approved a new staff member. She is not here. Diane Lidenbach is our new Director of School Renewal. We approved that on the consent agenda. She will be starting in the coming weeks, taking the place of Ms. Megan Green, who took a nice promotion in Sarasota County. She had previously worked with that superintendent in Duval County, so I want to congratulate her. But I keep going back to a destination district. We're able to attract some really fantastic professionals here in our district because of the work that you do with our board members, so I can't thank you enough because you set the tone for the district, and it's because of our board and the leadership that we have in our district that attracts the best and brightest, so I wanted to thank you. That had concluded my remarks, and I didn't know if we, we have any questions, but I just wanted to make sure we have a break before we jump into the legal stuff.
Are we good? Mrs. Richardson?
I, are we going to take a break now?
Well, I was going to request the chair, we take a quick break before we jump into the legislative stuff, and we can always ask questions when we come back as well.
When we come back, thank you.
Okay.
All right, let's take a break. Prince, let's go ahead and start over.
Yep, I just wanted to make sure before we close out the attendance, if we had any questions before we pivot to Dr. Wild.
All right, questions?
I have a question.
Yes.
So going back to page number eight, there is a, a chart, and it says days present, days absent. I'm not understanding that chart.
Days present, days absent.
It's probably the amount of children absent that day.
Mr., do you have an answer?
That, no, that's just, it's just showing that your average daily attendance for that particular day. So if I looked on the top line, Thursday, Alapata Flats had 92.73% of their students were present, and 7.27% of their students were absent.
I see. Okay. And let me go to page number, number 22, where it says that we have two Port St. Lucie police officers assigned for Port St. Lucie schools. We do not have any for, for the, for the.
Fort Pierce, that work, that's a good question. The city of Port St. Lucie pays to have these two officer staff for truancy. Currently, Fort Pierce does not pay staff to monitor truancy in, in Fort Pierce. Only Port St. Lucie does.
So who monitors? The school monitors?
Yes, we, we do that. This is just a, you know, that one of their initiatives is to keep kids off the street, Port St. Lucie, the, the city council, and they budget resources to do that. Currently, the city of Fort Pierce does not.
And, um.
And neither do, you know, the sheriff's department. That's just a unique thing to Port St. Lucie.
Okay.
Yes, I, since I've been here, they've been doing that. Any other questions?
Yes. So on page 26, where you have the attendance campaign, like, here it says Bayshore Elementary, daily average attendance, 97%. But that is a nice percentage of children that's attending school on a daily basis, right?
Well, that's just an example, Mrs. Richardson. What we want to do is, in the front office, we want to, when a parent walks in, we want that number. That's basically, they can change that number every day. So we want them monitoring that, putting that up every day, so it could change. Bayshore could be 97 today, it could be 95 tomorrow.
I see. I thought it was, I didn't think we'd. I see. I thought it was, I didn't think it was interchangeable or changeable.
Yes, we just want them to, that's just, it's really putting it in the front office that this is important, that this is something we're monitoring every day and, you know, we're, and you can see at that particular school at Okamik, they've got a sheet of paper that they put up there every day that it changes out. So every day they put a different one so the parents can see day by day what their average daily attendance is.
Okay, so it's not at all schools, it's just at some school where you can change it out?
No, it's at every single one of our schools.
That you can change that?
Correct.
Okay. All right, that was just my question because I thought it was like a normal daily average for that school.
Yes, it's not. It's day by day.
Okay.
I could see where, the one that says 97%, 97% for Bayshore, it doesn't look like it can be changeable.
That was just an example for the PowerPoint.
Right, okay.
That I don't want to misrepresent. It's, all of them are going to have basically a blank space and the school can, you know, put it on, use a dry erase marker, they can put a piece of paper. It's their option to do whatever they want to fill in that blank.
Great idea.
That we were on the same page because if we are saying that the daily attendance is 97%, I'm thinking that we don't have a problem?
We have a problem, Mrs. Richardson. That was just an example.
Thank you.
I want to make sure and those are good questions because I want to make sure we point that out to the public.
Well, and I'm sorry to interject if I may.
No, go ahead.
The example there, St. Lucie Elementary, that is, that was a snapshot taken by one of the executive directors. On that day, they had 95% attendance.
Boom. I wish it was 95% every day.
Again, the real problem is just not the attendance, it's the chronic students that aren't coming in and that's the real focus of the presentation. It's not really the minute. It's the ones that aren't coming. That's why we have police officers, that's why we have gun soldiers and everybody else.
Do we, are we finished with attendance?
Yes, we're ready to move on whenever you want.
So let me ask a question in regards to attendance then. How many children or how many students are absent on a daily basis? Why this is so critical? If you're understanding my question?
So last, the last year that we had and they showed 21, 22, the average daily attendance was about 89.5%.
Right.
So in a district of, let's say we have 40,000 students, 10% of 40,000 students is about 4,000 students a day that we have missing from school, that we have absent. The challenge that we have, Mrs. Richardson, is that goes up. Elementary is rough in a lot of our elementary schools, but in middle and high schools, that's where we're having the biggest problem because we've got students, you know, I shared, two of our high schools had 55% of their students missing 20 or more days. That's, that's, students can't learn if they're missing that much school and it's exacerbated at the high school level because they're on a block schedule. So let's say you miss 20 days, you know, every class you miss, you only have that class every other day. So if you miss 10 days, that could, if you miss like every even day, that could be 20 days really. So these are real serious issues. We're trying to address them the best we can in schools and that's the number one issue that we're trying to take care of is not just the attendance, but it's messaging to our parents that their kids have to be in school. Our schools can only do so much. We can hound them, we can remind them, we can call their parents, we can send somebody out the house. But if we've normalized that it's okay for kids not to come to school, then, you know, we've got to get that community support and that's why Dejawn's role is taking on an amplified meaning because that's one reason I've got to get the message to the community. Wherever they meet, wherever they show up, wherever they go, that's where we're going to be because we've got to get the message out to our parents. Their kids have to be in school each and every day. So that's really critical.
So Dr. Prince, if a kid, for example, doesn't show up to school the first day, is there something in place where the parent can be reached at that moment to say, unexcused, like the next day?
Oh, we're doing that the same day. We're trying to reach out to families the very same day, especially the first 10 days of school. You know, we want to get those kids into school every single day. But yeah, we're not waiting for them to miss five or 10 days. We're reaching out right away.
Is this something different that we're doing now or have we always reached out right away?
We've always reached out right away. I think one thing we're trying to do is really amplify the message to the public of what a problem this is. So every time I get a chance to go on, you know, most people in our community, they get their news from their local television networks, local, local TV. So if I can get on the local TV and talk about attendance, that's my best way of communicating to parents unless the parents are in our schools, talking to our principals and our teachers. I can tell you, one of the things we talked with our teachers is our teachers have to amplify this message as well. We're pushing it out on social media, we're pushing it out in our networks, we're pushing it out on our website because the parents have to understand that this is really our number one challenge right now. They've got to get their kids in school every day. It's not okay to miss school.
And the reason why I asked the question I asked is because many times parents have no idea that child is missing school. And so the quicker we can get to that parent to let them know, hey, Johnny didn't show up today, you know, do you know about this?
Well, one-
And then talk to that parent how important it is that they're in school.
And that's a great point because I've also gone on our, our, our radio shows that are not English-speaking as well. They're Creole and Spanish and messaging to those communities too because to your point, Dr. Mills, one of the biggest challenges we have sometimes is parents move and they change phones, they change phone numbers, they change addresses and they don't let the school know. So whenever we are calling them, we're calling a phone number that no longer works, it's no longer assigned to the parent. So that's why we really are also messaging, anytime you change phones, addresses, you have to let the school know because we have to have a way of communicating with you. Because to your point, sometimes they don't know because they didn't realize they just changed phone numbers or they just changed addresses and they didn't let the school know.
So when they change addresses, well, when they change addresses, that doesn't mean that they change the school zone, so they are probably going to the same school?
Correct.
Just, okay. Well, with reference to the amount of kids that are absent, 10% I think is the state standard of 10% per year or 10% of the time?
10% is what we were two years ago and the state was at about 8%. So the state has seen their attendance problems go, you know, they're in the same trend line that we are with attendance, but, you know, we've, we're trying to tackle this. I knew this was going to be one of my goals last year. I think Heather Rowland mentioned the fact that in January and February, we started training our staffs to ramp up for this year because we knew this is going to be a big push for us this year. But, but the state is probably at about 8%. Right now, we're at about 10% every day that are absent.
Now, is it the same kids? Are we talking about the same, like Ms. Rowland said, the chronic absenteeism? Are we talking about the same kids that are absent 20% of the time, sem, whatever that percentage is? Or is it the same?
I would say a smaller subset of that percentage, a smaller subset of that 10% are chronically absent. I don't know what that number is, but let's just say it's 4% to 5% are really chronically absent. And then you've got the kids that are, you know, they get up, they're not feeling well or sometimes kids say they don't feel well because they just don't want to go to school that day, you know? And that's really the message we need to send to our parents is unless they're legitimately sick, the kids need to be in school, you know, not because they're tired, you know, they just need to be in school.
So on an average, we're looking at about 4,000 out of the 40,000 kids that are in, or 40,000 kids that are in the district. We're looking at 4,000 that we're actually focusing on right now, about?
I would say it's fewer than that, you know. I can't put a number on it, but I can easily run the number of students that were absent more than 20 days and provide that information to you because that's going to be less than 10%. My guess, it's probably about 3% to 4%. It's probably more like 300 or 400 kids. No, I'm sorry, times four, about 1,200 kids. That's, that's my guess that are chronically absent.
And then we have the, just the now and then absenteeism?
Exactly, that we want to discourage from being absent, you know, unless they're legitimately sick.
But I'm just trying to get a figure because that's important, you know? Are we looking at half of the population?
Right.
Or are we looking at, you know, maybe 1%, 2% of the population?
And my guess, it's probably about 3% to 4%.
Okay, thank you.
We're going to go ahead and move on to the Dr. Heller now, Dr. Wild.
All right, this is our legislative update. All I can say is saddle up. Because I want to thank Dr. Wild because I'm going to be honest. This is not, you know, one of my passions. Legislation is not my passion. But I can tell you, thank heavens for Dr. Wild because she really, she really enjoys legislation. So she's going to take over now and share some really important legislative updates that really have impacted our public schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Prince, Chairman Ingersoll, and board members. He is right. I do like following legislation and then determining the impact on the school district. He's also correct that this was a very, very busy legislative session. You can see on the slide up here the number of bills that passed this year and we follow them very closely and then we get busy implementing the ones that apply to education. So I'm going to go over, I have them divided up by the bill and in some cases, because there are so many, I'm going to move very quickly. Please stop me if I need to slow down or repeat something. And I will certainly entertain any questions that you have. The first one that I'm starting with is from our local representative, Dana Trubalsi, and it is House Bill 7039. And the bill has a lot of topics in it that you can see on the screen. It has a real focus on the science of reading and mathematic deficiencies, but then other, other topics were added to the bill as it moved along. And one of the things that is impacting our elementary schools and we've already gone to full implementation on this is a change in reading instruction for our youngest children and it really has to do with a strategy that was used, has been used for a long time in teaching reading that is really more appropriate for older students, not for students when they are learning word reading. And that was the removal of a three-queuing strategy. We don't have to get technical on it, but all, any reference to it has been removed from any published materials, any assessments and so we're already implementing that and we've already trained the teachers on it. A big focus of her bill was to take all of the requirements that currently exist for reading, which has to do with notifying parents as soon as we notice a reading deficiency. We have procedures that we must follow for notifying parents of children in grades K through four about reading deficiencies. This bill requires that we do the same thing for math deficiencies. And the State Board of Education is going to come out with guidelines for this, for notifying parents of any substantial mathematics deficiencies. It also does talk about dyscalculia as well in reading. It talks about dyslexia and in mathematics, it talks about dyscalculia. And this, these are the guidelines for ensuring that we are providing daily targeted small group instruction and interventions and that we monitor the student's progress in mathematics. And for clarification, we already do that in reading and in mathematics because it is part of our multi-tiered system of support. We've presented that to the board on numerous occasions before when we talk about small group instruction and making sure we're meeting every child's needs. But now it's legislative that we do it for math and that we notify parents. Also, that last piece there is that they are, on the last slide, they are going to be coming out with a approved list of materials for both reading and math at the state level. This bill also now requires a home-based plan for parents for mathematics and the state is going to be working on materials for that home-based plan and as soon as they do, that will be implemented statewide. In addition, Dana Trubalsi was the representative that started the New World Reading Initiative where books are mailed to children's homes statewide. And now that initiative has expanded to include mathematics for scholarships to get help in math. And therefore, it has changed names. It is now the New World Scholarship because it applies to both reading and math. So that was the first major bill, just a quick overview of it. There's two separate bills that address students with disabilities on both ends of our age spectrum. One is for our students that are 17 years old. We now have a component of making sure that we inform their parents that at 18, they come of age and they now advocate for themselves. But they can, as a student about to turn 18, they can provide consent so that their families continue to take part in that, not just the 18-year-old child. Also, for our youngest childrens with disability, our youngest kids with disabilities that are in our pre-K ESE classroom, they may retain their four-year-old child and have them do another year of ESE pre-K. And if they do that, that does count as a retention year for third grade promotion with good cause exemption. So currently, if a student were to do an extra year in pre-K, that would not count towards one of their retentions for third grade and they could end up being too old later in elementary school. So this is, it's good that they put that good cause exemption in that bill. Okay, 1537, this was one of the biggest bills to pass this year with 144 pages and 40 sections. I tell you that because this slideshow has 120 slides, way shorter than even one of these bills, even though it feels very long. All of the topics covered in 1537, this is the bill where they talked about graduation concordant scores this year, but all of these other topics were covered. I'm not going to read them to you, but I am going to go through some of the main ones. For the graduation concordant scores, just a reminder that we are seeing an increase in cut scores for graduation purposes. So it's going to be harder to graduate this year than it has been in past years. That was supposed to go in effect last year and in 1537, they did delay those increases for one more year because last year's graduating class was in ninth grade when the pandemic hit. And so they gave last year's graduating class the same grace as the year before except they did increase the required pert score to graduate. So they did see one increase. This year, they'll see the rest of them.
Just want to emphasize that because we're going to see statewide graduation rates go down. That's, that's just a fact. We've, we've earned our, for the seventh straight year, graduation rates exceeding 90%. This, we don't know where we're going to be, but this year they're implementing this. This will have a, this will have a substantial impact on us and the state.
Also in 1537, you may have heard about this. This is a substantive change to the school grading formula in that any school that has a third grade class, so elementary and K8s, will have a separate cell in the countability formula. So third grade proficiency will count all by itself for 100 points and those third grade students also count in the overall score for reading proficiency. So this is a brand-new grading formula for those schools, for school grades. And they've also added another test for high school students as a graduation option, a concordant score with the new classic learning test. They have not yet set cut scores for that. That is a new test that we've never used before in the state of Florida in public schools. In addition, this bill has identified September 11th as Heroes Day and it will be honored every year. If it falls on a non-school day, it will be honored on the day closest to it. And with this, it also requires a 45-minute lesson in middle school and in high school and those lessons will be embedded into the civics and US government classes. In addition, they've added a new element of required instruction. We've done presentations about all of those areas of required instruction and they have added Asian, American, and Pacific Islanders to that. There's also a graduation requirement change and that is with our fine arts requirement. Students are required to have a credit in performing in fine arts and you can now meet that with a career technical course. In addition, each school district annually has to update or inform the public about their HIV and health education curriculum, and anytime there's a change to that curriculum, we must notify parents. A new term, teacher development or professional development, has been changed to professional learning. So you will hear us referring to professional learning instead of professional development, and DOE is required with this bill to put together a professional learning marketplace. So it'll be a statewide professional learning database that teachers can go to. We're still on, we're still on House Bill 1537. It switches over to discipline now, and it talks about searches. So when a student must be searched because we believe they have something either dangerous or against school rules, it just outlines that the search must be conducted discreetly to maintain the privacy of the student, and that anything that is taken during that search must be immediately returned to the student, if it is prohibited to be on campus. There's also a new stipulation about violent acts, and this is that if a student intervenes to stop violence, there's a rebuttable presumption that they were trying to stop the violence. So this just means that if they were trying to break something up, that we have to consider that in terms of any action that we take from a disciplinary standpoint. This is a big change you may or may not have heard about in the news. Students have always been prohibited from carrying their own headache medication, whether it's Tylenol or aspirin or anything like that, and now they are allowed to carry their own on campus. They used to be required to have it stored for them with a physician's note in the clinic. So this was a change that we had to make to the code of conduct and to our training.
Is there an age limit on that?
There is no age limit on that, all ages. So that, that is gonna require communication with parents and with students to make sure that they're not giving those, those pills to other students. Okay, in this bill, there's also language regarding the State Board of Education and the Florida College System Institutions developing courses that are actually alternatives to Advanced Placement, ACE, and IB. So there's gonna be a new set of courses coming out, and it does allow them to create assessments with them. They could use the classical learning test. We don't know what this is gonna look like, but this is an alternative to AP, IB, dual enrollment, and ACE. While they're doing that, they're also gonna be doing a comprehensive review of all acceleration items for college-level coursework, looking at completion rates, comparing those programs I just mentioned, ACE, IB, AP, and dual enrollment, looking at how they affect students' ability to complete college, whether or not the bonuses have an impact, and so forth. So that study is underway, and it has to be completed and reported out on by January first, two thousand and twenty-four. This was a clarification to make sure everybody understood that students could combine their paid and volunteer work hours towards their Florida Bright Futures. And that was it for that bill. There are several bills, and there's been a lot about this in the news. We've been trying to do a lot of communication with our school staff, our principals, and so forth, because there are multiple bills related to technology in schools, cell phones in schools, applications, websites, and so on. So this one is the one you've probably heard the most about, and this is that students cannot use their cell phones primarily in class, during class time, unless their teacher tells them they can, and it has to be for educational purposes only. Also, they cannot use web applications, websites, or software if those applications don't protect against the disclosure of their personal information. This is also where it was outlined that students can't use TikTok, and, and that is on the ITS Department to block TikTok on our server. And any social media, we have to prevent social media use on our internet except when teachers allow it.
And said, teachers must designate an area for the wireless phones.
Yes.
So in other words, the kids come into a class, the teacher has an area where they check their phones, they put their phones somewhere. Is that, am I reading that correctly?
So you are reading it correctly, that teachers need to explicitly tell students where their phone should be during class. They could have a charging station, but most teachers are recommending that students put them in their backpacks, their purse, their pocket. So they're out of reach, out of sight, but not, not in an area where they wouldn't be safely secured.
I thought we already did that. I thought that was something that we were already doing. Am I wrong, John?
This just requires that the teacher has to make sure they do it.
Mr. Kelly, that's best practice, but now it's legislated.
Yeah. This requires districts to have an internet safety policy or to update their internet safety policies to limit access to students to only age-appropriate subject matter, which means that ITS has to determine appropriate age level and then block access based on those determinations. So elementary schools wouldn't be able to access the same websites as high schools, for example. Again, it talks more about protecting safety and security of student data, and we have to block certain sites. It also adds another required instruction element, but all related to technology. So we will be teaching in grades six through twelve about social, emotional, and physical effects of social media, and the DOE will be creating those materials, and they'll be available to us online. In that required instruction, they did outline exactly what will be required, and it does include, I think, a lot of positive things for our students to consider, like the negative effects of social media on mental health, putting out misinformation on social media, being able to understand that it is misinformation sometimes, to know if it's designed to manipulate behavior, talking to them about what they post online and how it's out there and permanent, and how to maintain their own safety, security. It's also going to address cyberbullying and how to report suspicious behavior online. This, this one here, Senate Bill 662, actually applies not to us but to the websites and applications themselves. So this is holding them accountable for not targeting students or using their personal identified information. So what that does is it requires us to very carefully examine their terms of use, terms of agreement, any contracts that we sign, to ensure that these companies are complying with this law. It also prohibits any applications that come from a foreign principal, and it lists China, Russia, Iran, North Korea, and Cuba. And also related to that, there's going to be a list put out by the Department of Management Services of prohibited applications. So any of those applications that are being used on a computer-issued device, so student computers, district-issued cell phones, must be deleted from those devices within fifteen days. So Terrence O'Leary and his team has been working on provisions to ensure that we comply with that new requirement. Okay, House Bill 551, another piece of required instruction, and this one requires that we submit annual certification showing the history of African Americans has been taught in accordance with the law. And it also requires that we prepare posts on our websites and submit to DOE our implementation plan for all other topics of required instruction. They have been collecting this for years. This is just a little bit more detailed with the posting on our website, and it also adds the third bullet, which is the state can come back and tell us that we need to fix something. In the past few years, they haven't, they haven't told us anything about what has been submitted to them. Okay, this is a different bill, Senate Bill 256. This is the one that applies to unions. It does not allow any of the bargaining units to deduct dues from payroll checks anymore directly, so that has been stopped. It does allow members to withdraw in writing without giving a reason. Some unions were requiring a reason to drop out of the union, so they're no longer permitted to do that, and it requires unions to maintain their membership at sixty percent of the eligible members for that bargaining unit, and it requires the union to actually submit documentation that they do have that level of paying membership, or they, they may not maintain their certification. And it adds a lot of reporting and accounting provisions to the bargaining units that I did not outline in detail, but they do have a lot of new requirements. Senate Bill 196 and 240 are both about academic advising, so they apply to our middle and high school guidance counselors, some teachers, and also to career and workforce education. And it does require that students have a personalized academic and career plan, and that we use the new Florida system that is coming out, and it's called Zelo. And we, we currently use the previous system available from the state, and prior to that, we use Naviance. So we have been creating these plans, middle and high school. We're just gonna be moving to this new product and training all those involved in this new. What I'm hearing is it's a great new product. A new requirement for our high schools beginning this school year is that they must host a high school career fair for their juniors and seniors. So this is a little bit different than what some of our schools have done in the past, because it also has to include the opportunity to interview with potential employers. We are allowed, though, to do joint career fairs, so the schools will be collaborating to determine the location, the dates, and the Career Technical Education Department, as well as secondary guidance departments, will be helping to support the schools to put on these, and they must be held during the school day. These cannot be evening events. Also, I'm eager to see what comes out of Senate Bill 240 because this does have a stipulation that the state has a work group come together to look at the math pathways for students. Currently, the lowest level math a student can take is algebra and geometry, and then they have to go to higher pathways of math. And so this is looking at whether or not there might be another math plan that aligns for our vocationally-focused students or students going into career technical education, and is there a math plan that might be more practical for them? So we're looking forward to seeing that. And if you've heard about diploma designations before, we have the scholar designation, and we also have the merit designation, which is for students that get an industry certification, and that name has been changed to industry scholar designation. Okay, this one is, the state of Florida is gonna be putting together a workforce called the Florida Talent Development Council, and they're gonna be looking at any barriers.
Dr. Wild.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Wild, are you, are you waiting for us to ask questions at the end? Because these are a lot of bills.
Either way.
Yeah, let's go ahead and stop if you got them. Yeah.
Because I've already circled pages waiting to get to the end. I'm like.
Yeah, there's a, there's a ton here, so if you wanna pause and.
Okay, that, that Senate Bill 240. In regards to having to allow employees to interview potential employees, right now, we're looking for young people that's seventeen and up for our after-school program. So when is, when will, have we decided, because this is for twenty-three, twenty-four, so it's this school year?
Correct.
Do we have any idea when we're gonna do that? Because I think it's a great thing to be able to do it kinda like in the beginning.
Yes, they are collaborating now on picking locations and dates for that, and as soon as we get that, we'll make sure that you all have that information, and we'll be putting it out on social media. We'll be advertising it heavily.
And we'll look forward to that. I'm sure quite a few employer, employers will look forward to that.
Yes.
And then I'm gonna go all the way back to Senate Bill 1537.
Okay.
Dealing with the graduation.
Yes.
Can we be more specific for our audience as well as ourselves? What is going to cause that graduation rate to possibly go down?
Sure. The test scores to meet graduation requirements were supposed to increase a couple of years ago, but due to the pandemic, they delayed them. So students are gonna have to score higher on any test that they use for graduation purposes in reading and math, whether it's SAT or ACT, and also the PERT test, which a lot of students use statewide to meet the math requirement, is going away completely. So the PERT test will no longer be an option. They do have the option of the PSAT, the SAT, the ACT, along with the PM one, two, and three, the new progress monitoring system, as well as the new classical learning test that we haven't, we haven't learned about yet.
So basically, for our, for our parents and our community, the, it's going up as far as passing to be able to pass that rate.
Correct. The score is higher than it's ever been to meet the graduation requirement. So this year, seniors have to meet a higher score regardless of what test they're using.
With the graduation rate, it's a two-point-oh? Is it still going to be the two-point-oh or?
Yes, the two-point-oh has not changed.
Clear that up for the, our audience, two-point-oh?
Yes, the question was, is the two-point-oh required grade point average going up? It is not. Over the course of your four years in high school, a student has to earn a two-point-oh grade point average out of a four-point scale to graduate.
I think right now, this is enough for my.
Okay.
Slide seventy-nine.
Okay, I was talking, just finishing up Senate Bill 240. This, this council is going to be, the statewide council is going to be reporting by December one, two thousand and twenty-three, a report of anything that gets in the way, any barriers to students getting workforce ready. So we'll be reporting out on that when we get those results. House Bill 389, this was a bill that was originally put together by a group of students, and it just allows school districts to make menstrual hygiene products available to students. You may have seen it on the news, which is why I put it in there, and that we can't, they can't advertise on them, and school districts are encouraged to work with community partners to provide those products in our clinics. House Bill one, this was the, I think, the first bill that was passed that was education-related, and it is the very large bill on family empowerment, scholarship programs, and online graduation requirements. A lot of, a lot of topics were put into this. This is the one that expands the family empowerment scholarships to all Florida residents in grades K through twelve with no income caps. This bill used to be income-related, but they have made it available to anybody. They have twenty thousand scholarships for the year twenty-three, twenty-four, and then it'll increase to forty thousand each, by forty thousand each year until two thousand and twenty-seven.
I'm sorry, can we go back to that one? So what that may fund, no more than twenty? Is it per, per what, per?
That is statewide. The state is, can fund no more than twenty thousand scholarships for twenty-three, twenty-four, but it's a phase-in, so the following year, they can increase it by forty thousand more statewide. People taking advantage of the family empowerment scholarship and forty thousand each year after that, families.
So let's say we have six or seven districts. So it would be six or seven pretty much divided by that twenty thousand per district.
Yes, it's not evenly divided. It's just based on application.
I'm just saying, that's about the amount that we'd get per district, give or take a few.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
It does expand the use of these funds, so now they can be used for tuition and fees, like to go to private schools and so forth, transportation, but also for curriculum and instructional materials, tuition for homeschool students to go to private schools. to go to a private school or a virtual program, fees for assessments and their own industry certifications, contracted services, part-time tutoring, and pre-apprenticeship programs.
Dr. Wells, can we go back one minute to?
Yes, ma'am.
Page 66, the House Bill 379, which has to do with wireless devices?
Sure.
Anywhere in this bill, does it state that students cannot use their devices while they're in the hallway going from class to class?
No, ma'am. Only that the district prohibits them accessing certain things on campus, but it does not prohibit them using their phone in the halls. That is a school or school district decision. Some districts have opted to do that, but it is not required by legislation.
Thank you.
Okay, going back to House Bill 1 and family empowerment. I listed all the things that it can be used for, just some new terms you're going to see. The state is establishing a new position called Choice Navigator, and that individual is going to be supporting families who are on the family empowerment scholarship. There's also two other additional terms, the Personalized Education Plan and the Student Learning Plan. And these are plans that students will be on if they are not in a public school district, but they are taking that family empowerment scholarship, and they're a homeschool student, and they're working with a Choice Navigator. There's also going to be an online portal that parents can go to to look at what the educational options are for their child. And they'll, it's going to be interactive. They're going to ask the parent questions about their needs and then advise the parents on what their school options are. In House Bill 1, it also requires districts, school districts, to complete individual education plans for ESE students that are attending non-public schools. The challenge here, though, is that this includes students that we've never had in our schools. So we don't know their educational needs. So this is a new challenge for the ESE department, and I know they've been working really hard to determine the best ways to implement this. There's also a mention of deregulation within House Bill 1, and I know some of you have seen that. It does repeal the requirement that online students take, I mean, that students take one online course for graduation. This was actually not a requirement of the student. It was a requirement of the school district to make sure that the student did take at least one online class. That is no longer required, and that's effective immediately. And it also gives us two additional days when a student transfers to transfer their records. There were some things in House Bill 1 that were about teacher certification, and they were designed to help address the teacher shortage. You probably already know that temporary teaching certificates were extended from three years to five years. And also that if a teacher is on a temporary certificate and they get three consecutive years of effective or highly effective evaluations, they no longer need to pass the general knowledge test. Also, if they have a master's degree for something that only requires a bachelor's degree, they would not have to pass the general knowledge test. Or if they have three years of highly effective or effective evaluations, they may not be required to pass the professional education competency exam. So it's a reduction of testing on our teachers if they have proven effective in the classroom for three years. This one is actually a new state board rule that was passed July 19, 2023, that I put in here for information because as we've been implementing it, it's being talked about across the state. And this is that every school district must have a provision now for parents to let the teachers know that they want their child to be called by anything other than what's on their birth certificate. So if they want to be called by a nickname, they must fill out a form. And then we have put that into Skyward so that the teachers can see what the parent has authorized their child being called. So if your child's name is Michael and they want to be called Mike, or your child goes by their middle name, even if the school has always known them by their middle name, the parent needs to fill out a form to authorize the use of that name. So we have put that into practice. The form has gone live. It goes into effect on August 22, and we have started that implementation now.
Do you have to implement that every year? Or once I fill it out for the kid's life, it's good?
I believe once they fill it out and you have it in the system, you would only need to update it if the parent changed their choice.
Yeah, but this is a big deal because we've got a couple of weeks. I make a joke, you know, Mr. Gent goes by Wayne, but his first name is Earl. So if you're watching Mr. Gent, you would have to fill out a form, or your parents would. But that is a big deal. I know we, you know, going through school, my given name is Jonathan, but for my entire school life, I was called Johnny. That was my name, my parents called me. So this is something we're trying to message to our parents, that they'll be called by their given name unless their parents complete this form. We try to make the process as easy as possible on Skyward.
Yeah, so we do have the form online and also available on paper.
That would also include a name that may be like Joshua, but you want to call him Josh? So it's even that close?
That's correct.
Yes. It actually says any deviation from what is on the child's birth certificate or their legal name.
So if you have been calling Joshua Josh for the last 10 years, they still have to fill out one of those?
The parent does, yes.
Okay, thank you.
So we've asked the school if they have a student that they know that is the case for, and they haven't filled out a form. We're going to keep contacting them until they do. So we want the student called by the name they're comfortable with. House Bill 1069 has a lot in it as well, very important topics, and important topics that the board certainly does need to be aware of. This is the bill that actually defines sex, and it is, it's specific to school districts, that we must follow this definition of sex and how a person is classified, male or female. And it also says that it is the, it is the constitution and the law of Florida that a person's sex is immutable biological trait, and it's false to ascribe another pronoun. So this is something that we have trained all of our teachers on. It's part of our required training for new employees as well. Going further, this is where the details come up that we really had to make sure we emphasized this year. No student or employee of a public school can be required to use someone's pronoun if it does not correspond with that person's sex. Nobody can be required to, which is different than the names. If a parent fills out the name, then we are required to call him the name the parent wants him called. But with a pronoun, if it doesn't correspond to the person's sex, it is up to the employee whether or not to use it. Also, an employee may not provide a student with a pronoun to use for them if it does not correspond to his or her sex by that definition on the previous slide. A student may not be asked to provide his or her preferred pronoun or get in trouble if they don't want to. But they're not going to be asked, so that part is irrelevant. And the Florida State Board was authorized to provide a rule around this. And what they actually did is they included it, they just did it, goes into effect 822. If you violate these, or if a district violates these, it's a violation of the professional code of conduct for teachers, the professional standards. Also, with our HIV and health education materials, this is a change. Last year, they changed it to require that the school board approve those materials every year. We didn't used to do that. We used to only approve them if they changed. Then it was required to be approved every year. Now it is required to be approved by DOE instead of the school board. So we will have to be sending our materials to DOE. When teaching this subject, it can only be taught in grades six and up, and that we must teach sex is determined by biology and reproductive function at birth. So that is a new requirement within health education. With the instruction, this was an expansion of last year's bill where you were not allowed to teach on sexual orientation or gender identity pre-K through grade five. Now it's pre-K through grade eight. And high school, only if it's required for the course. And for book objections, I know you have all read the books and gone through a book objection process. It does require that our book objection form be posted on our website, on our homepage, and that it be easy to read. It also adds a new criteria that somebody could object to, and it is sexual conduct as defined on this slide. So it used to be pornography, not suited to the ability of the students to comprehend or not age-appropriate, and that was three criteria. Now it's four, so it added sexual conduct. This is where I said it needed to be on the website. If somebody objects to a book title based on pornography or sexual conduct, it must be removed within five days and remain off the shelves until it's resolved, which we already do. Our school board, you guys adopted that in our school board policy, that we would remove them until the process was finished. And the underlined third bullet is a really important one to be aware of as board members. If, when a parent is reading from a book at a board meeting, they do have the right to read the passages that they want to object to, and that if they are stopped from reading them because it's because of pornography, then we must discontinue the use of the materials. So that's a change to be aware of. And when the committee finishes their work, if they determine that there's any pornography, then the book must be discontinued, which we haven't had any, that that determination has been made for. If they determine any of the other reasons, sexual conduct, the ability to comprehend, or that the materials are not appropriate for all ages, then the district can decide to keep them limited to certain grade levels, which is what we did in St. Lucie. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry. On the third bullet there, it says, "Parents shall have the right to read passages." Are they being literal with parents?
That is an excellent question because that is literally what the bill says. But let me pull that and provide clarification to the board on that because citizens can object to a book, so we need to see if the parents' part is explicit.
Thank you.
Excellent question. We did a lot of the committees to review the books in the past. These committees now must be noticed and open to the public. And any committee that we call must have parents on it of students who will have access to the materials. So we do have students on our committees. If it's an elementary book, we'd have to make sure we have a parent of an elementary-age child on the committee now. And, let's see. And we do have to publish our policy, which we already do. If a parent, this is also something to take note of. The last step of the process previously was with the school board. Now, if a parent disagrees with this, and it does say parent, disagrees with the school board, they may request the Commissioner of Education to appoint a special magistrate, which school districts will be required to pay for. Are there any questions on 1069 before I move on? Because that is a big one.
I actually do have, can we go back to the last slide?
Sure.
The one before this? Okay, no. The one that's?
No, okay, hold on.
I guess we're going back.
That one?
One more, maybe? Okay, the one that talks about the parent, if the parent disagrees with the?
Oh, yes, that's, that is this one?
Yes, sorry. With the determination made by, so it can be one parent or is it a group of parents? Just one parent?
It's one parent. Each book objection is from an individual. So if the board makes a decision on that individual's book objection, and they don't like the board's decision, it gives them one more option to object to another party, asking the Commissioner of Education.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to House Bill 1521. I know there's a lot, I think we're getting close to the end now. This one has to do with restroom and locker room use based on sex. And it does create, they're calling it the Safety in Private Spaces Act, and it requires that individuals in, other entities as well, but in school districts, use restrooms designated exclusively to their sex at birth, if it's a unisex, if it's a multi-stall restroom. If it's a unisex restroom, that's exempt. But if it's got multiple stalls, or it's a changing facility such as a locker room, then an individual can only use that if it corresponds with their sex at birth. There are a couple exceptions for entering a restroom or a changing facility that does not correspond with your sex at birth, and that is if you are in there to assist a student, a child under 12, an elderly person over 60, or a person with a disability. And then also, if you are law enforcement or a custodian cleaning the restroom, those are also exceptions to that law. Also, they did also create a violation of the professional standards for anyone who violates entry into the facilities if it doesn't correspond with their sex at birth. They also require that we put it in our student code of conduct, that it's a violation for students to do that. And we are also now required to submit to the DOE evidence that we are complying with this statute related to facility usage. And anybody who believes that we are not complying does have an avenue to complain to the Attorney General, and school districts could be subject to a fine of up to $10,000. Okay, House Bill 5101 is the conforming bill, and it had a lot in it, so I just put a few in here that are relevant, most relevant to us right now. And that is, for our DNF schools, we've been required to do an annual memorandum of understanding, or LOU, with the union kind of relaxing the bargaining requirements for the schools that are DNF. And that has to do with providing bonuses to teachers. We no longer have to, that is no longer subject to bargaining. It also clarified that that, all the restrictions on the use of pronouns only applies when employees are at work or acting in their role as a school district employee. They collapsed the evidence-based reading instructional categorical allocation, but we're still held to all of the requirements. Just for your information, the amount that teachers get for the Classroom Supply Assistance Program, formerly called LEED, is now set each year in appropriations. This year, it's $300. There's a new Heroes in the Classroom bonus in this bill that provides an amount of money to teachers in high-demand teacher areas as set by the DOE and by the appropriations. And that's for veterans and first responders to become teachers. They set aside $10 million for that. The superintendent is also required now to annually verify that our professional development supports fidelity to implementation of instructional materials. That just means when we're training teachers, we're teaching them to use the materials as they were designed. This is an interesting one. There's a new school being established. It's going to physically be sitting in Alachua County for grades 6 through 12. They did set aside money to, as a startup for this school, and it's to serve students who meet selective admission criteria to foster academic competition. And you can see the rest of it on here. It is similar to a magnet or a charter, and it's governed similarly to the Florida School for the Deaf and Blind. Yes, ma'am?
House Bill 55101. Heroes in the Classroom Bonus. Oh, that's the bonus, okay.
Yes.
So veterans, bonus for veterans and retired first responders who commit to becoming full-time teachers. They get additional bonus available. Do they still have to take the same test that other, to be certified?
No, there's another bill that does change the requirements for them after a two-year degree, and I think I do have it in here, so I should be getting it. So I should be getting to that shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Any other bills about 5101? Okay. House Bill 1035, this was dubbed the Teacher Bill of Rights. What this bill actually did, much like the Parent Bill of Rights, is it brought together a lot of things that were already scattered in different chapters, different rules, different bills, and put them into one bill, for the most part. It does have a teacher apprenticeship program, which allows people with an associate's degree, similar, this is similar to the bill that we wrote with our Grow Our Own Teachers. But this is that the, someone with an associate's degree with a 3.0 GPA in their college program can team teach with a mentor teacher, but the mentor teacher has to have seven years' experience and certain evaluation requirements. And then that person can eventually get certified by being an apprentice. This is the First Responder, Dr. Mills. It's in 1035. The general knowledge, professional education, and subject area examination fees can be waived for first responders, firefighters, and emergency medical personnel, and veteran and first responders would be eligible for a sign-in bonus. This is, again, if they have, meet this criteria listed here. It also mentions that teachers shall have access to liability coverage if it's funded in the General Appropriations Act. And a teacher may receive reimbursement from reasonable expenses for legal services from his or her school district for, for civil or criminal actions that arise out of the performance of their duties. It alludes to, or it mentions the fact that teachers must be provided multiple pathways to get their certification, and that they can get tuition waivers for up to six credits from Florida universities and college systems. This is a lot on one slide. I was really just trying to capture it so you could read it on the slide. But this is saying that teachers have the right to control classroom behaviors in their classroom, including sending a student to the principal's office and, or the dean's office in a, in a high school, writing a referral for that student, and making a recommendation for what they would like to see the consequences to be. Then the principal or dean is tasked with the evaluating what the student did and determining if that, first of all, if it indeed happened, and if that offense warrants the recommended consequence from the teacher. And if it does, then that could be the consequence. If it doesn't, then the principal is required to notify the teacher of the reasons why a different consequence was given for the offense. This is similar. It's the right to direct classroom instruction, and it talks about if a school district directs a teacher to violate any laws around instruction, that they can then take the case forward to a special magistrate. And, again, the cost of that magistrate would be absorbed by the school district. Okay. Three more bills that I put all on one slide. They all have to do with school board members specifically, and it's House Bill 0477, 31, and 411. And I'm sure you are all very well aware of the new school board legislation related to eight-year terms and when that kicks in. So school board members are limited to eight years now. There's also going to be a resolution for the public to vote on on making school board races partisan, as the way they used to be prior to 2000. And also 411, which provides that an elected candidate must reside in the area that they're running to represent by the date that they would assume office. House Bill 0733. This one requires middle schools and high schools to not start any earlier than 8:00 AM for middle schools, 8:30 for high schools. It doesn't begin until July 1, 2026. And then there's language talking about school districts preparing families for this by explaining the risks of sleep deprivation and so on, and discussing local strategies with their constituents. Dr. Prince?
Yeah, this is a big deal. So it's, it's not just a big deal because of the impact it has on our high schools and middle schools, but it has an impact on our athletics. It has our impact on our local economy. If you walk into a Publix at 3 o'clock, you'll see a lot of the employees are our high school students. So we have until 2026 to implement this, but this is also going to have a profound impact on our transportation, because it's going to require more buses. It's going to require greater burden on our transportation department. It's also going to potentially impact the hours of our transportation folks. So as we get closer to this and this impact, we'll, we'll workshop this with the board with regards to some of the solutions we're going to have to come up with. But, you know, I know that, that from a, from a lobbying standpoint, the district is really going to ha, ask the legislator, legislature to maybe rethink this, because it's the law of unintended consequences. This is going to have a huge impact on the community. And it's also going to force our, our smallest children onto buses earlier in the day, which is also a safety issue as well.
Okay, Senate Bill 7024. This has to do with retirement, and it's also a teacher and administrator retention strategy. And that is that any employees in drop or going into drop, it used to be a five-year program. It is now eight, 96 months they can be in drop. And for classroom teachers, they can extend that an additional 24 months. It used to be able to extend it three years, but that was on five. So now a classroom teacher could remain in that drop status for 10 years after they officially retire. It also removes the time limit for when you have to make the decision to enter drop, and it increased the interest rate from 1.3% to 4%. It used to be six many years ago, so, again, it's an incentive to, to try to keep our much-needed teachers. This does, though, however, come at a cost, because the employer contribution increases, and it's estimated to cost up to $350 million statewide. This is a grant that's put into a bill now for districts to apply to to do some school mapping data with DOE. And this has to do with emergency response mapping. So Terrence and his team with security will be looking out for this grant and determining the need for it. This is for charter schools, and we are required to submit a report on the services that we provide for charter schools. And this was called out, the second bullet here. This is something that was just very explicitly called out in this bill. And it allows charter schools to dismiss students for poor academic performance as long as they have put a progress monitoring plan in place for one semester. So if a student is struggling, they can dismiss them and send them back to a regular public school. And it requires us to provide training if we have the charter schools using any of our programs or software. And DOE is going to be developing a standard monitoring tool. And then randomly in here, it also requires all schools to have a choking poster in their cafeteria. Dr. Prince, did you want to say something?
I will withhold my comments on the second bullet point.
Okay. Also, House Bill 1259. This is requiring school districts to share capital outlay millage funds, a proportionate share with charter schools. Of course, that has an impact on public school district capital funds. Senate Bill 543 is Public Safety and Threat Management. They're going to use the term threat management more than threat assessment moving forward. On our threat management teams, at least one person who's familiar with the student must be on the threat management team if we have a concern about a child. The state of Florida is going to be developing statewide systems for threat management, a new operational process, along with forms that we must use and a portal that we must use. Every district must have a threat manager coordinator. Ours is Dr. Michelle Gillard. The process must be developed by December 1st, and it must meet all of the requirements outlined here on your slide. The Threat Management Assessment Instrument has already gone into effect. And now we're moving into athletics. These are the last few. House Bill 225 and Senate Bill 190. This allows students attending public schools to go to another school district or a different school, a private school, for example, to partake in an activity, a sport, if their public school doesn't offer it. And, but there are criteria listed for that. This one does also apply to charter schools. And it also, House Bill 225 addresses opening remarks at state contests, competitions where multiple schools are, and it outlines how those remarks can be made on the public address system at the sporting event. We've already shared this with our schools. Yes, sir?
I have questions about the sport one.
Yes.
So, go figure. A kid that's at Lincoln Park Academy can go play football somewhere?
Yes.
Now, does that kid get to pick a school? Or does that kid have to go to the closest school?
No, they would have to, they would go to their zone school. So every school, every situation's going to be different, but a Lincoln Parks school, a Lincoln Park student would have an address, so we would know what their school is that they're eligible for.
All right, any other questions? I know we had a lot of legislation. There was a ton of slides. I want to thank Dr. Wild, and not just Dr. Wild. I want to thank our team. Our entire cabinet is involved in the implementation of all of these laws with regards to our school centers, our curriculum, our instruction, our professional learning, all of those things. It's a, it's a big job after the legislative session, especially a legislative session like this, where we had so many impacts on what is happening in our classrooms and our day-to-day operations of our schools. If you have any questions, even if you leave, if you've got any questions, we'd be happy if you send me those questions. We'll send it to the entire board, just so that, you know, if, if you have some time to process this, because I know it's been a lot. Any other questions before we shift? And Dr. Wild will continue to dominate the session with the presentation on, on the Palm Point transition. Any other questions?
I have one follow-up question based on what Mr. Ingersoll asked. If it's a Lincoln Park student and they, and they are zoned for Fort Pierce Central, and they want to now play on the basketball team, that's allowed?
No.
No, okay, so I need that clarification then. Dr. Wild?
Yes, thank you. It is an opportunity to clarify. No, because Lincoln Park does have basketball. So it's only if you're attending...
No, I said football. Did I say basketball? I meant football.
Yes, yes.
I meant football.
Yes. For, if the school does not have that particular sport or intra-scholastic activity, then they could go somewhere else, but not if they do have it.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
So, a child can go to a different school because of sports? If one school doesn't have it, but not necessarily because of, go ahead.
No. And let me also clarify in there. You see, there has to be an agreement between the two schools first developed. So it, it's a process. And it's not that they would attend a different school for school. It's that after school, they could go participate in a sport if that sport isn't offered. Unless it requires school day activities, you have to be able to do the full program. So if part of it happens during the school day, then no, you couldn't go do that. But if you're able to do the full program at that other school outside of school hours, and an agreement is put in place, you can.
And so you are responsible for your own transportation?
I believe that is correct.
One more follow-up question on that.
I know that is correct. Yes, ma'am?
If a public school student, if, if there's a, they attend a high school that doesn't have, say, something like golf as a, as a sport, and a private school does, it, does that extend to private schools or charter schools if they have that?
Yes, it does. If they're, if the two schools put an agreement in place, it does extend to private schools.
Okay, so we're going to transition, speaking of transitions. Palm Point, we will be bringing this to the board in September, on September 12th. And also, on a side note, remind the board that we do have an executive session at 3 o'clock on September 12th, prior to that board meeting. But we're going to just kind of walk through the, the process for transition with the board. And once again, as you get emails from any of our families with regards to Palm Point, if you would forward those to me, we'll make a personal phone call to those families and, and just talk about options and what those impacts will be. So, Dr. Wild?
Okay, thank you, Dr. Prince. Palm Point. That is, that is the beautiful Palm Point, and that is the faculty. The purpose of this presentation is to give a quick overview about the transition from Palm Point being a partnership between St. Lucy Public Schools and FAU to being fully operated by St. Lucy Public Schools. And we started with what we believe to be the most important, important commitment, which is all of the current students at Palm Point will be able to stay there until they matriculate out, including the, the existing kindergarten class, this year's kindergarten class. That is a long-term commitment to those families, because we are committing to seeing them all the way out of the system, and that takes a long time in a K-8. But we, we did want to keep that promise to our families. So first, let's talk about the timeline. When, this all started with looking at the contract, some informal conversations, and then moving into completing a contract between all parties involved. The Florida Atlantic University Board approved the transition on August 15th, and the St. Lucy County School Board will vote on the contract on September 12th. And the transition would become official on July 1, 2024. What, people ask, what is going to be different? And I think that most people are surprised when they learn more about Palm Point, because most, most everything stays the same. Teachers and the staff are already St. Lucy Public Schools employees, so they remain on our salary schedules. They remain in their current bargaining units if they are a member of a bargaining unit. They continue to utilize all of our curriculum, our scope and sequences, our resources. They attend all of our professional learning opportunities now. All of their ancillary services, including custodial, food service, transportation, technology, security, maintenance, all remains the same. It's already provided by St. Lucy Public Schools. And the teachers and staff remain eligible for the bargaining unit, like I said. I mentioned that the students will remain, and the question is, will transportation continue? Yes, it will. Transportation will continue for all of the existing students until they move on to high school or leave the school for other reasons. Okay. What will change? The student assignment process will change. That is currently maintained at the school, and there's a lottery. Beginning with the incoming class of '24, '25 next year, the process will be managed by the Student Assignment Office, using the existing application process that we use at our schools now. Beginning in '24, '25, students residing in the red zone will be eligible to apply. Students currently attend from all St. Lucy Public School attendance zones. Palm Point is unique in that it's considered to be its own school district now, and it will now be part of our school district, which means their federal entitlement grants that they currently receive and maintain as a single district will be going through our Grants Department and will be allocated in the same manner as all of the rest of our schools. So they will receive an allocation. They, currently, they have two boards, the TICAS Board and the School Board, and now they will only be accountable to the School Board. We want to make sure, and we're putting this out in all of our talking points, and we'll be putting a lot more out on websites and social media and every avenue we can, to make sure that our incoming families, whether they're, have a child starting kindergarten or moved to the community, understand what their alternatives are. If they live in the green and the blue zone, there's... green and the blue zone, there's never been a time when everybody gets into Palm Point. It's always been a school that generates a lot of interest, but there are a lot of wonderful alternatives. So in addition to their zone schools, they also have other countywide options. So we have our traditional magnet schools, Fair Lawn, FK Suite, Lincoln Park Academy, as well as our MOA prep program. That's the Marine Oceanographic Academy at Forest Grove Middle School for grades six through eight, which is a feeder into our award-winning MOA program at Westwood and Harbor Branch. We also have our themed magnet schools, the Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucie with district-wide transportation, as well as Sam Gaines Academy of Emerging Technologies. And I know that we've done lots of presentations on the successes at those magnet school options. The benefits of this change, it does, we were looking at the growth that is coming into southwest St. Lucie County. We did that bus tour, and you were all able to see firsthand all the new homes going up. And we were anticipating the need to build a second K-8 school. We're building a new one. We were looking at needing to build another one in 2030. And we believe in current predictions that this would allow us to not have to build that second K-8 at a current cost of $65 million. It would also provide us the first public school option in, in the tradition area, because we hear that from the families a lot in southwest St. Lucie County. And we're also helping to meet the needs for new K-8 seats in that fast-growing area currently. The transportation costs will be reduced, because it's a lot fewer district-wide routes, and bus traffic should be reduced with shorter rides for students. The communication plan, there was a news release after the FAU board meeting, when the, the press saw that board meeting, and that was on 8/1623. And then the principal at Palm Point, Kathy Perez, sent, sent out information to her families and to her faculty on that same day. And then talking points were provided to our student assignment office and to their front desk staff to be able to answer families' questions. It's really important that people get accurate information and that we support our families through this transition. And then the superintendent sent a letter to the Palm Point families and staff, along with some frequently asked questions, on August 18th to our families. He's also going to be sending communications to our homeowners association and our realtors, so that they are providing new families to the area with accurate information. And we will continue to keep our student assignment website and all of our websites and social medias updated. And that is a quick overview of the transition, and we open it up for questions or comments if Dr. Prince wants to add anything.
I just have one question. Another thing that'll change is that we're not going to give sibling preferences outside the red zone, right?
Correct. So that matches the policy at all of our other St. Lucie Public Schools. So sibling preference for existing students who have younger siblings coming in, they won't get sibling preference that, in that direction.
I'm sorry, was that a won't?
Correct.
They won't?
They, they won't. If they're outside of the red zone. Because we have committed to see that transition through, through 2032. If we continue to do sibling preference, it would be another, potentially, eight years before we could eliminate that district-wide transportation. So we've gone way above what is typical. In, in most cases, when you change this type of access, you change it immediately. But we are not impacting any existing students. So we're going all the way out till 2032.
Yeah, and I wanted to add too, I mentioned this in a, in a previous workshop, that, that we're allocated about $11 million for transportation. We spend $25 million. So we're going to be rezoning when the new high school opens in 2025, and, and try to create more proximity patterns with our schools to try to alleviate some of the burden that we've created with our budget with regards to transportation. And over the next, in the next eight years, as those, those transportation issues get resolved with Palm Point, we'll hopefully have a much tighter transportation cycle for our schools to, to save the district, or at least break even, so that we're not spending so much money on transportation. Because it is untenable. As our district grows in size, we, we can't, we've got to start addressing some of the issues that we've created over time with transportation. I'd also like to add why, once again, this is such a win for the district. It's a win for FAU, too. They want to focus on, on areas that are initiatives that they've gotten closer proximity to in Broward County and Palm Beach. But also, we, prior to this, we had no real footprint in basically west of I-95. We're going to have three in the next three years. We'll have the new high school, which is opening in 2025. We'll have a brand-new K-8 opening up in 2026. And starting in 2024, we'll be able to admit kindergarten students that are local into Palm Point. So I just think it's a, it's a fantastic, it came together really fast, but I'm really excited for the district, because I think what it shows is our commitment to our taxpayers and, and our, our commitment to working smarter with regards to how we're allocating our resources. And I'll, any other, or questions we'll take at this time?
I have a question, just to, some remarks. I find the, all the governmental changes that are being made to the school boards and the system to be very disturbing. I realize a lot of those things have to be addressed and taken care of, but who monitors them? Who administers them? I, I, it's a great, it's a lot of work on the part of administrative staff to oversee this. But our teachers were mass police recently, and now they're going to become TikTok police, pill police, nickname police. I mean, I'd rather, you know, I like the old thing back in the day, reading, writing, and arithmetic, you know? And now I gotta have, the teachers have to do all this, too. You know? It's, it has to be addressed. And on a lighter note, I'll get off of that, because it really is disturbing to me, to just put these things out there. But who's going to do it? Who's going to monitor it? I think you understand what I'm saying, exactly. I'd like to, just, I think it's great that you, in your attendance plan, that you made every school do their own attendance plan, and everybody has to be accountable for their school. I think that's, and everything that you did is, that's terrific that you did that. That's all I got.
Anybody else?
I don't really have a question, and time is of essence, I'm sure. But I do want to bring up a concern that was brought to me by our, our community. And I'm going to go back, this is the beginning of this, this school year. And I am going to kind of, I guess, just kind of, I guess, set the stage, let's see. And the, the concern is with the, the ELA, the reading, okay? So where we, where, where the questions that were posed to me was like, with the 45% reading rate that we have for the district. There is a concern, there is a great concern out there. I'm, I'm surprised you are not hearing it. I'm surprised, or if it is, you know, I have not heard it being addressed. But there is a, there is a concern there. 45% of the kids that took the test are reading proficiently. That means 55% of the kids that took the test are not. So, and when I went back, I went back and I looked at the schools. When we were doing board, when we were doing the, the negotiation for the, for the superintendent's salary increase, we looked at five schools. And I went back and I looked at those five schools, and, and I saw where their, their PM3 result was significantly higher, with the exception of one, I believe it was Manatee County, than St. Lucie County. So I'm saying that, and the reason why these districts were chosen, Collier, Marion, Sarasota, Manatee, and I think it was in Martin County, it couldn't have, I'm not sure what it is right now, the other one, those schools were chosen because they resemble, they closely resemble St. Lucie County. So my thing is, my thought pattern is, if they resemble St. Lucie County that closely, then our results should be maybe just as similar, because they represent St. Lucie County. So I'm saying that to say that we need to charge or charge the superintendent with, you know, raising, bringing the, the reading rate from 45% to match some of these percents. There were like 56%, 54%, 49%. But it was certainly over 45%, with the exception of Manatee County, that was at a 1% proficiency. So that is what I would like to see. And I think I'd be surprised if the board doesn't want to see that, that the, we raised that proficiency. There was a CERP report that went out, that we, the board signed off on, approved. And when I called Just Read, Just Read at the Department of Education, they said that this was the first time that the board had to approve this, to approve this, this plan. So the board approved this plan. And in the plan was an increase from where we are today, a 5% increase for the different, for the different grades. And I am thinking, just my thought, and Dr. Wild, you may correct me if I'm wrong, that if the board is going to, I'm sorry, please forgive me, superintendent, you may correct me if I'm wrong, but if the board is going to be held accountable for, or we have to vote on it, that means that the board is probably going to be held accountable for something that we agreed to? No? Okay, could you explain that to me? Because I don't want to be giving out misinformation, Dr.-
Go ahead, Dr. Wild.
Actually, thank you for that question. She's referring, Mrs. Richardson is referring to the K-12 reading plan, and that is an annual plan that, that we do submit to DOE. And really, everybody sets stretch goals. We try to set a goal that is a stretch. Many schools exceed it, and then each school sets their own goals. But overall, if you don't meet that, you, you write a new one the following year, and you set another goal. So we're always encouraged in the reading plan to set a really high goal, and it's, there's not consequences if you fall short of that goal, but it's to kind of reach for the stars. So we're, we're looking to make as high of a gain as we possibly can. But there is no consequence if you don't meet that gain. You just keep revising your strategies and working with every single child.
Well, that is, that is probably a stretch goal, but you're, one of the things that I did learn is that this plan is just, it's a conduit to get money, to get funds for the reading program.
Well, actually, that was one of the things that I mentioned in the conforming bill, 5101, is that used to be a requirement that went along with the reading allocation. There was a separate reading allocation that we received, and as a district, our, that plan is actually where we outlined how we spend the money, what strategies we're implementing. Now, they're separated. There is still the requirement to do the reading plan, but we're not getting a separate allocation anymore. So it's separate from the, the money. There's, it's no longer funds attached. But the requirements from Just Read Florida about putting strategies in place, having multi-tiered systems of support to, to reach all kids, addressing individual deficiencies, those things have not changed. So we document compliance in that reading plan, outline what our resources are, but it's separated from the money now.
When I looked at the plan, I saw that there was like a $2 million-something dollar? So that is not anymore?
It's not in a separate allocation anymore. So the requirements of what we, the goals that we had to put in place and where we outlined how we use that money, we still have to, we still have to put all of those strategies in place. But it may not cost that much, it might cost more. It comes out of our general funds now. It doesn't come from a separate allocation anymore. This year's funding formula changed quite a bit, and they eliminated a lot of those categoricals.
Okay, because that, when I looked at the plan and when I called, it said that $2 point, whatever, million dollars, and it was attached to the, to that reading plan. So since then, that has changed?
Correct. That was, that was, that's the way it's been for years and years, but they just did away with the categorical.
Okay, so, but the point is that we are below where we are supposed to be, the state average. These other schools, these other districts are above the state average. And I think that reading, and like you emphasize and overemphasize when we sit here, we, and listen, that reading is important, reading has got to be a priority. That's one of the reasons why I asked the superintendent, how many kids were affected by the absenteeism? And so we, we talked about a number. But when we talk, when we look at the amount of kids that are not reading right now, or not reading proficiently, it way exceeds the amount of kids that are absent. So I'm saying, what I'm saying is that we can look at, or we should, because they are just as important. But reading is very important, and that should be like, you know, like a laser beam on how are we going to get these 13,000 kids reading or moving along to where they are reading proficiently and, and on their own?
Yes, and Mrs. Richardson, we all agree that reading is our laser focus. This year, we've added math. So of course, reading and math are our two main focus areas. Even focusing on attendance, the end result of that is to focus on reading and math, as Dr. Prince has stated. I think just for clarification, a lot of those districts were cited because of the size of the district being similar to St. Lucie County, not the demographics, the free and reduced lunch rate. We use districts that are similar to us when we look at academic performance. And we do that, we reach out to districts that are similar to us if their results are showing that they might have some good strategies, and we do look at what they're doing. So it's a matter of what are you comparing districts for? If it's size of the population, that's one thing. If it's, if you're looking for academic performance, you want to look at like districts, districts that are made up of the same socioeconomic balance within the community. So it depends on what we're looking for when we compare ourselves to other districts.
I, I understand that, but not to, you know, extend the time. But if, when, when we are doing these kinds of comparison, and we are saying that it is similar, then it needs to be similar, you know? So my understanding was it was similar in most ever respect, not just the size. And even that, that, that could be debatable, but that's for another day. So thank you so very much.
Yes, ma'am.
It always shocks me when we look at our tests, particularly reading, and, you know, they say, oh, these kids are at 50%. But I'm always dying to figure out how these kids score 67% in science, and when they go to social studies, they get 75%. Did they not read the test? Did they just go and, you know, Christmas tree these tests all the way down? I, I've always wanted to ask the state legislator that question. How all of a sudden, they can't read when they take a reading test, but when it comes to a science test, a social studies test, my God, they get so much better. One of these days, I'm going to ask a legislator that. Remind me that. Would you please? Is there any other questions?
Comment more so, based on what Ms. Richardson is saying. We know that, how extremely important reading is. We know that. Reading is also compared with our prison system, you know? Based on how, you know, our children, third grade reading has been, there's been research and study that if our students are not reading on the third grade level of what they should be reading, it is definitely, research have shown that a lot of our prisoners, people in the prisons- people in the prison system is, is there because of a lack of learning how to read. And it is extremely important, I think, I know that we need to concentrate on that math as well, but it doesn't say, the studies don't say if they're not performing in math, they're in the prison system. So I, I, I know that our superintendent and our administration understands the extreme importance of our children reading. And we do look forward to that reading level going up as high as we can possibly make it as, as each year goes by. I'm grateful that it has gone up in, since about eight years, seven years now. It's been slightly raising, but we need to make a real effort to just even push even further in that, because a lot of our children are not reading on level in the third grade. I work with a lot of them, and they need a lot of help, and we know that. So we are looking as a board, I'm sure, all of us, as well as administration and our superintendent, to make sure those readings, grades go up as best as possible in achieving the third grade level reading test. I appreciate you bringing that up, Ms. Richardson.
Anybody else? Let's go home. All right, this meeting is closed, thank you.